Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 p.m. I'd like to call the meeting order. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Evening, everyone. First item on our agenda is approve the minutes from September 9th, 2024, and September 23rd, 2024, regular meetings. I'll take one motion if someone doesn't mind giving for both. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
To accept the minutes.
Motion by John Welsh.
Second.
Second by Lynn Landalina. Any discussion or corrections on it? All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item 1B, additions to the agenda? Any additions to the agenda?
I have something. Looking at it, I thought we talked at one point about busing and having regular updates included. I don't see it on here, but I wasn't sure if maybe it was somewhere else. If not, then I think we should include it.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we had a busing update.
Okay. How about if we had that under superintendent's report, under B? Give a short update. So we'll put that under superintendent's report, item 3B, bus update. Do there any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, move to item 1C, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Good evening, everyone. Comment.
I'm Pat McKenney. I live at One Center Drive. I'm here mainly because I appreciate you putting on the agenda. Because I thought it was going to be, I watched the last meeting, so I came down just to continue. I'd like to just have continued discussion about this one bus route in town. I think some of you know I was the parent who sent an email two weeks ago about that bus route before I, I'll be brief. I just do want to say I have had great conversations with Superintendent Tim Phelan, principal at Seymour, and some things have been corrected, and I know that we're working on things. I just feel that this bus route still has some major issues timing-wise. I'm not comfortable with how quickly these kids are getting to school on time. That's my main concern, because I want my daughter at school with enough time to consistently put her backpack away, have time to sit, have time to talk to her friends, relax after being on a bus that has 50 kids on it. We are one of the larger buses on that route, and I understand that. So I just want to make sure that the conversation continues, even if there is no update, that the board still sees that there still is an issue there. It might not affect every student. I'm also trying to advocate for all the students. I'm taking time out of my own schedule to follow the bus, watch the bus. I clock the bus with time of arrival at my house, when it's arriving at Seymour School, when it arrives at Alpharo School. I know we have some information on that. So I just want to make sure that the conversation continues going forward, and if I can be any help to that at all, that would be greatly appreciated, because I just, I really think this is an M&amp;J bus issue. If we could somehow get them maybe represented by the meeting to discuss why we can't seem to get this one route to be correct like the others, and that would be great. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from visitors? Seeing none, move down to chairperson's report. Good evening. First thing, I'd say CAVE has a new members orientation and leadership conference coming up on December 3rd. That may be good for some new board members we have, or anyone who wants to go through the leadership conference. I've been to that before. CAVE, I completed a CAVE webinar they've done on school finance and on school policy. CAVE convention is also November 15th or 16th down in Mystic, if anyone is interested in going there. They do have some good workshops on teaching board members on what we're supposed to be doing. It was nice seeing, I think I was watching the news, and I was, no, I guess it was on YouTube, I was pleasantly surprised to see Ms. Gilbert in a chorus singing at the hockey game for the Wolf Pack down in Hartford. And it's nice to see that kind of publicity in our group going out there and doing things outside of the school. That was very pleasant and another surprise for me. And tonight, just to let the board know, I did get a letter from the Republican House Committee for our board vacancy recommendation, which we'll be dealing with later on in the meeting. Okay, and that's the end of my report. Go to item 3, superintendent's report. Missy?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Item A of the agenda is an annual presentation that we provide to the board and to our public. This is the presentation on our data assessment, particularly our S-Back at our grades three through eight, our SAT at our high school, and you'll learn a little bit if you're unfamiliar with the assessments that we use with our youngest learners. So I'd like to introduce, and I thank the administration for being here. We have Mr. Bob McGrath from Allgrove School. We have Ms. Marcy Lukinbach, Seymour School. Mr. Tim Phelan, East Granby Middle School. Mr. Patrick Gustafson in the back from East Granby High School, as well as the principal, Mr. Tony DeMello, East Granby High School principal. We have Karen Gogel, who is the Director of Student Support Services, and Marjorie Light, Director of Curriculum and Professional Development. And David Kirchner are always supportive IT.
Where are you going? [laughter]
Don't go too far.
I'll say good evening.
You must not be talking to the...
You're on your own.
All right.
TV.
Well, I will say what I will be presenting tonight is for Allgrove School. Just later in the presentation, you'll see a lot of, as you know, the scoring from state testing and other scoring that you might be familiar with, PS, SATs, and AP scores. At Allgrove School, because we're in a K-2 elementary school, the assessment's done through our ELA program and our math program. We've added a new ELA program, Savas Learning, but we test using the DIBELS, DIBELS, thank you. That's good, thank you. And that tests students on their reading skills, foundational skills, phonics, linguistic awareness, fluency, comprehension. And then our math program, iReady, also is, we're in our third year, and you'll see the results from that. The results that you're going to see on these two slides, three slides, will show really right from the program the students are instructed in and how they're performing. The DIBELS assessment that I'm going to show you is a state, considered a standardized assessment by, as sanctioned by the state. We had to use that. So let me just begin. All right, so for Allgrove School, I'm going to, I'm going to walk over there in a second because I'm going to have to explain these numbers to people far away. So this is the ELA scores for Allgrove School, kindergarten, these two bars here, first grade and second grade. It's the last two years. I thought I wanted to show you the growth over the last two years. So this first bar for kindergarten, first bar for sixth, first grade, and first bar for the second grade, oh, sorry, the lower bar. This is our, this is last year's end-of-year performance, 23-20, excuse me. So you'll see we had 76% of, no, 78% of our kindergartners were in the, green is at, blue is above grade level. So we want to see green and blue. And what you'll notice is, so we were, for the 24, 21st, first grade was 86% were blue or green last year, and in third, second grade, it was 84%. But why do you know also that if you look from this cohort here, this is kindergarten two years ago, here they are last year, and that's 10 percentage points higher? If you'll notice the length of the bar. And then this one, I'm sorry, this one to this one, and then from this, from first grade two years ago, just, there now, second graders here, and it's an eight-point increase, eight percentage point increase on both of those. So we're happy with the way the program is coming out. It's based on the science of reading, as we talked about in previous meetings. It does focus on student fundamental reading skills that all add up to their comprehension. So we're very, we're very pleased with this. Did you have any questions on this slide? Because I'm going to just switch to math. I'm going to show you two slides for math. Again, it's, it's, I'll interpret it here. So this is the, this is Allgrove School, all students, K through two, K through two, and we have 66% who are honor below grade level, 14% are at start-grade level. So 80% are at either start of the year of the grade level or end, or end of, or above. So we really want this striped line, this is what we want to see, this is where kids should be. This group is close, so that's 80%, and then this 19% represents the group of students that are a year below grade level. So 80% are either at the start of the grade level or surpass the grade level. Okay? These are the breakouts of the numbers, numbers, operations, algebraic functioning. Here, they do geometry, they do geometry, and what, what, at the level of our students is very strong. And these are the individual grade levels. So this is, this is the whole school, this is broken out. And you can see though, the shading is similar in all cases. It's about, it's almost 70% in kindergarten, 68 in first grade and 60 in third grade are honor above grade level. This next slide demonstrates the two-year growth. So this is our first year of the program two years ago, and they give each student, student does a baseline test beginning of the year, and they set, they assign a target growth number, and we met that growth rate at 109%. This is again, this is the placement from two years, two years ago, and this is, this was two years ago, and this is last year. The numbers, I just reviewed. And you can see the growth rate went from 109 to 127. So we're becoming more, you know, proficient with this, with the new program. It, we give, the best part is it gives us this time year-over-year tracking data, and it is a K8, K8 issue. So we're going to have great apples-to-apples data in math. And that's me. Did you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Thank you very much, and I'd like to introduce my colleague, Bob.
My only comment, Bob, is it looks great. Do you, how do you and the teachers feel about this being a new program compared to what you've done in a previous?
I think they feel pretty confident. Two things I would say about both Savas and iReady, ELA and the iReady Math Program, they've been very supportive. We have a good relationship, the professional development, the teachers are receiving, it's been very helpful. They really, they've come in, we've had them come in at different times of the year. So the teachers get a chance to, you know, have an initial, and then, hey, this is what's happening. And what it also does is it's allowed teachers to become more proficient, because now, okay, you get a new program, you know, it's like drinking from a fire hose. There's just so many things it can do, and they have to get comfortable with it before they can ask those higher-level questions of what do I do next? But they also, both of them give the teachers a lot of support on what to do when you have a student that's struggling. They, they give you support, and we've got really good teachers, so they know what to do with it. But I, but that's, they really have what it to, they do, and they do appreciate having, I think, this growth data too. Because before we, at this level, K-2, we don't really have a lot. You know, you do it in a sort of, this is more objective data, which is really helpful. And it is really helpful because the teachers can meet in their common planning time and go over this data in their PLCs and really, you know, address it. And they have data that, it's common for all of them. It's not what little quiz I gave to my kids or how I, it's relatively standard, actually. So all those things together, Bob.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marc. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Where's Hannah?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So Marcy and I are here to represent the scores for S-Back and NGSS, which take place both at Seymour and at East Granby Middle School. These are our state-standardized tests in the same family for ELA, for math, and for science. The percentages that you'll see in the following slides reflect the population of our students that either met or exceeded proficiency expectations. Our slides will specifically show the following: data tracked by cohort from year to year. You'll see some wins, some growth, and some areas to focus on. And then a percent by comparison to the state average into our local surrounding towns. And lastly, once, once we get to the end, we'll discuss, actually partly through and towards the end, we'll discuss what we have done at our schools to address the areas of focus. It's usually at this time where I give my, my annual statement about the data. First, please be reminded that we are one of the smallest districts in the state of Connecticut, usually in the bottom five for population. So when discussing test scores, each student carries significant data weight. So depending on the grade last year in the middle school, each student carries anywhere from 1 and 1/4 to almost 2%. So that doesn't account for students who also move out and move in. So sometimes there could be a percent boost or shift in the other direction, depending on. But in many cases, it's just a handful of students increasing or decreasing a few raw points on their performance that day on each of their tests, and then that can create a drastic shift in the percent score. The second point is, please also remember, this is one snapshot of a few days of testing for each of these students. On any given day, each student could perform just a little bit differently, for better or for worse, and that difference could have a profound effect on our numbers. So many variables could affect a student's performance, including, but not limited to, what questions were asked that year, did the students rush through the assessment, and what was the school's climate that day? So Marcy's going to discuss the ELA numbers next.
Good evening. If you look at the grid, you'll see our ELA S-Back results for grades three through eight. If you follow a color diagonal, you will see how that particular cohort performed in the different grade levels through, over the course of those years. So if you look at that first one, and you think it's green, is it green?
It's green.
Grade three had 59%, and you follow that down to this past year, in grade six, they had 73% meeting or exceeding grade level standards. If you look horizontally across, you can see how a grade level's performing over a series of years. Please note that in year '23, we adopted Savas, My View, K7, or My Perspectives in grades six and seven. K5 was My View. This is one of the Connecticut State Department of Education-approved curriculums that districts were asked to adopt. We did a whole process through that. Our teachers really felt, and I know Mr. McGrath just spoke about it, our teachers had a lot of say in choosing the program that we're going to move to. I will say with ELA, we knew before we adopted this, we had pieces missing. There's a lot in literacy, and we knew that the current curriculum that we were using was missing pieces. This is much more comprehensive. Our teachers feel it's much more comprehensive. That being said, we've been able to identify some areas that we need to beef up, and I'll talk about that in a later slide. ELA looks at reading, listening comprehension, and writing or research inquiry. Those are the three areas that we kind of get subscores on. So this graph or chart shows our data, same data you just saw for '23-'24, in comparison to the six towns that surround us and the state average. We are the purple one, that's kind of the third column, but from here, it doesn't look very purple.
It's much more purple, I guess, when appropriately.
It says EG at the top.
Yeah, it does. I think it's important to note, because I did hear a lot of discussion in the spring of that we were not competing with our neighboring towns. And I think you can look at this data and see, especially with Suffield and Granby, which is the one that seems to be that we're most compared to, we're, we're right there with them. Some grade levels, they may have performed a little better than us, and then another grade level, we performed better than them, or it was just an even wash. But I think the statement should be that we are, we are right in the ballpark with them as far as our ELA scores.
So for math, similar type of a table. You can see the diagonal progression of a cohort for each of the past years, taking a look at, I don't know if you can see the cursor there. There is grade six, uh, grade five, 68% the previous year, those students, 67% of them reached proficiency previous year, 60%. So our hope and our goal from year to year is to show growth as you go diagonally. If you look horizontally, you can see how the numbers have been over the years within that grade level, even though the students passing through are different each time. So you could take a look at two ways that we've done some growth and some improvement. We adopted iReady K to 5 in '22-'23, and East Granby Middle School was so excited to see how awesome they did K to 5 that year, that we continued with those students who are familiar with the program for our grade six students in '23-'24. If you look horizontally, you can see that the implementation of iReady right here showed a jump in our grade six program from year to year. We attribute that to not only the students' familiarity with the program, even though it was our sixth grade's first year using it, but also that the program has been successful. It's really neatly aligned with the common core. It gives student-to-student individual data and progress with three benchmarks over the year with the fall, the winter, and the spring, and it gives tools for teachers that are really practical and pragmatic. So when we looked at these data and saw that our sixth grade had a successful year relative to previous years, we at the middle school before the summer really began, because we've had these numbers for a while now, made a decision to continue grades seven and eight this year, regardless of the fact that the grade eight students had never seen iReady before. We've just seen that it's been successful throughout our district, and why not implement it for the rest of the grades? So making our comparison to the surrounding towns, I'd say similarly with ELA, with our math scores grades three through six, we were definitely in a, you know, hanging right in there with our locals, specifically with Suffield and Granby. I recognize that in seven and eight, we definitely hoped to see some improvement through the years ahead of us. But that being said, you know, we're building a foundation on this iReady curriculum that students in grades three through six have seen up until this point. And not to hammer a naughty word from years past in there, but we're also starting to see less of that COVID bubble as we get further and further from it, specifically since the younger students who, I guess we're seeing less students in our schools now that would have been less or more drastically affected back then. So our hope is that with the iReady implementation, that we'll see increased success on the foundation of the years prior. So three through six doing well this year, we'd like to see that in three through seven the following year, and three through eight the following year, and so on and so forth. So in the end, I'm glad that we have these numbers, because the places where we made the tweaks last year, in my estimation, and the year before in our district, have been effective. And we hope to use the numbers from that to drive performance in a better direction for some of the other places where we hadn't used those neutrals.
So the third assessment that we look at is the NGSS, which is our science assessment, Next Generation Science Standards, and students take this test in grades five, eight, and 11. And Mr. Phelan, his science mindset, said something last year that really stuck with me, and I was looking at the practice test before this, and I realized how true it really is. Science, the science test really is the convergence of ELA and math. I was doing some of the practice items. It's not like, what is the definition of photosynthesis? Those types of questions are not, not a part of it anymore. The one I was looking at, they were reading about erosion and its impact on a shore, and then they had to look at three different options for stopping the erosion for the homeowner, but they also had to look at the cost of each option, and then they had to decide which was the best option and choose reasons, three reasons why. So the analysis that students have to do in that type of test really takes all of the skills.
Which grade was this?
This was fifth grade. That was a fifth-grade test, practice test. Our fifth grade scored 85% above or meeting the expectations. They were number three in the state of all fifth grade that had reported out NGSS scores, so we're really, really proud of that. And 11th grade was number four in the state of all that had reported out. That's what the little asterisk means, not all the schools have a report because of different factors that keeps, they withhold their, their report. So I think this is something to be really proud of, and really shows that our students can read, they can do the math, and they can put it into a different content area, which is really real life, but that's what we want them to do in real life. So we're, we're very, very excited about our NGSS scores.
Knowing science is close to my heart, Ms. Lukinbach did ask if she could do this slide, and I said absolutely, because she has a great number to brag about up there, and I have her scores on the column. That's awesome.
Yeah. Well, and the best part is scientists, you probably hear from your children, they're excited about science. They go home, and they're, they're just psyched to do science, and that's great. That's what we, that's where our future engineers and architects and all, all those things are going to come from. So we're really excited about that. This is our comparison of our NGSS scores with, again, those six towns that are surrounding East Granby.
It's you, Hannah.
Yep. So what are our next steps? Well, we look at this, Mr. McGrath and I and our staff looked at this K5 for us, because we feel like these S-Back results, these NGSS results are K5 collaboration. So on August 28th, one of the PD days before school, we sat down and analyzed all the data that we had, and we came up with two really targeted areas that, for instruction. One, listening comprehension, which kind of surprised us, because we've been teaching listening skills for a long time, but we had to shift our thinking. Yes, we teach listening skills. You put your eyes on the speaker, you're sitting up, you're thinking about the questions. But we had to shift it to listening comprehension skills. What do you do as an active learner while you're listening? Because on the S-Back, they have like a podcast that they listen to, there is no visual prompts at all, and they have to take that information in and then answer questions. So we are teaching towards that. In that, along that line, third grade found an online platform called ListenWise, and that's exactly what they do. They use different podcasts that are interesting to students, that support a lot of our science and social studies, and they teach those listening comprehension skills, or give teachers the tools to teach those listening comprehension skills. We're going to actually spread it out to fourth and fifth grade a little bit later in the year. The other area that we needed to focus on is our operational fluency in mathematics. Our kids are still not as proficient in straight algorithms as we'd like them to be. So we're going to flip things a little bit. There's been a big shift in mathematics, mathematics instruction in the last several years about concepts, but there's also some new, not new, but there's some divergent thinking out there that you teach the procedures on some things, and then you build the conceptual understanding afterwards. So for example, if you're subtracting three digits, you teach the kids, this is how you do it, and then we go back and revisit it. We've been doing the whole conceptual piece of it and then teaching them the operation. We're thinking that might be creating some confusion, especially because they're introduced to several different models for doing that. So we're going to do very explicit teaching on that operational fluency. At the younger grade levels, that might mean building place value. It does mean working on our facts. Even into fifth grade, we still have students who are struggling with basic facts. So we're, we're going to be reaching out to parents too for support with that, because we feel like that can be something that parents can support at home. And then finally, three times, at least three times a month, we meet in PLC meetings, and we're looking at our data. We're planning for targeted instruction. We use win time, and so right now, in, at Seymour, third, fourth, and fifth grade is using their win time for facts. We're building that fact knowledge. It's hard to get into long division, which will be a sixth-grade standard, but you're learning some of the maybe partial quotients in fifth grade if you don't know your math facts. You, your, your, your brain can only hold so much. You've got, that should be something that you don't really have to think about, and you can really focus on more of the operation. So that's what we're, our goal is for right now.
At East Granby Middle School, in practice regularly, we use Sback interim assessments put as lessons. You know, they're interim lessons, sorry, interim assessments that you can log in and have your students take the test online as a practice test. We try not to overtest our students all the time. So we try to, you know, borrow those items from those tests and put them into our unit assessments or lesson plans so they can increase the familiarity of the students without overtesting them. But we do also give them a couple of times per year a chance to sit and simulate. So when it comes to game time in May, they're familiar with the process and familiar with the computer and familiar with how to operate the platform, even if they've taken Sback before. Department analysis is happening at the department level and at team level as well, looking at student individualized data and grade level data. So we might look at, for example, a trend in geometric reasoning in grade seven might be a deficiency. And so the teachers can say, let's work at it in our unit design to improve that. And we can also identify student data where we have those students who are like a high two, quite a three, we can identify those students. We like to call them bubble students, where they're right at that threshold, so we can give them a nudge in the right direction. Like we've already reported, we're excited about the new math curriculum. And to echo Mr. McGrath's point, iReady has been really supportive in our adoption of that curriculum. We had oohs, ahs, and wows from the math department as they were working with the representative who was teaching them. We asked very, you know, pointedly, can we please have it so you give us the tools and work with the tools and show us how to use the tools so we can start the school year, walk in the door, and get it going? And it was great. In ELA, we're continuing it with the sixth and seventh grade. Grade eight, we tend to use as a transitional year where we try to go more towards the high school ELA as they're going to be walking in the door to prepare for things like Mr. Demello you're reporting about in a few moments, the PSATs and the SATs. So we did not adopt Sabas, My Perspectives for eighth grade. This year, we're also working with the new science curriculum, OpenSciEd, which, unlike the iQuest through Activate Learning over the years, which has been successful and was in alignment with NGSS right out of the gate, the teacher resources for OpenSciEd are free. Nothing's better than free. And we have some teachers who are excited and on board and see a lot of alignment with the NGSS standards and the Common Core ideas. We continue to use clear, precise, focused SRBI process to target instruction. So we have Lori Nelson as our SRBI interventionist who works both with DLA and math skills. And we also made a decision this year to identify math students who are close and in need of support and putting them into math teachers blended learning labs. So in essence, we're getting twice the time with the math teachers to enhance that. So hopefully, we can give them a better chance when they go to take that test in May. The report so far has been positive on that move. And last but not least, we have our after-school program, the Famous Homework Club, which gives us a chance to work with our students after school who are identified through the SRBI process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you for having it color-coded. It made it make sense. I appreciate that.
It's fine on paper.
Good.
Looks great on paper.
As Mr. Demello is setting up, this presentation will be on our website tomorrow.
Good evening. I'd like to first shout out our girls volleyball team who won this evening, Senior Night. Pulled out the W against Golden. Really, really, really a big thing. Fantastic. We had a great job too, which I was happy about. So start off, East Granby High School, Tony Demello, principal. So to begin with, just want to point out the two accolades there on the left. Number one, if you look at the bottom, the U.S. News and World Report, 2024 Best High School Silver Badge. We've been consistently picking that up over the last 10 years, which has been nice. The one that I'm a little bit more proud of at the moment is the Silver Recognition on the 2024 AP School Honor Roll. Last year, we received the Bronze Recognition. This year, we're getting the Silver, which is fantastic. It basically means that we are providing more opportunities for more kids to take AP courses throughout their four years at the high school. So pretty big deal. Would you guys use, did you use this?
I said the L.
All right. Class of 2025, which is research graduating class, we look at last year's numbers. So last year's SAT test, NGSS test, et cetera, from last year. So 67 test takers for English reading and writing. The average score was 538, which 73% of our students scored above the benchmark, which is 18% over the state average. And the math average score was 509. 40% of our students scored above the benchmark, 10% over the state average. For NGSS, the class of 2025 had an average NGSS score of 1,115. 77% of our students met the NGSS percent proficient score, 30% over the state average. If you look at two quick little comparisons in the bottom right-hand corner, we generally do a, I know we like to do the comparison of the districts around us, but we also like to compare ourselves to the NCCC, which is the conference that our school is in. So not only do we compare ourselves sporting-wise, but we also compare ourselves as scholar athletes and scholars in general to see how we look in the small, NCCC, we are a small, a class S school, so with the smaller schools. Even though Granby's in our NCCC, and so is Suffield, which they are M's depending on the year and the sport that they happen to be playing. So as you can see, fourth out of 14, seventh out of 14, and third out of 14, schools in the conference. And then for the state, 33rd, 43rd, and 4th. Again, with the asterisks signifying the fact that not all districts' data and numbers are posted on the site that you can look at, the ed sites that you can look at through the state to kind of look at where your district falls and how where their districts fall. Not all districts are able to put their information out there. What's the fancy word for it? Suppressed. Thank you, suppressed. I kept saying, in my head, I'm saying surprised. Suppressed because of whatever number is too small for them to report out on. So that's why they do it. That's why that happens.
I'm sorry, Tony. There's not 162 reporting, there's 162 districts.
There are 162 schools.
Public high schools.
Public high schools, right? Because you can count, so like Creck counts as its own district, but every single school for Creck reports out.
Do they publish, that's interesting. All their schools are part of a district? Do they publish this kind of information for their district then? I'd like to see, not from you, but it'd be interesting to see their results.
Probably.
With all the money that we spend on those programs.
Probably. I mean, you can go on the ed site, you can go on the ed site and see that, you know, you can look them up as, you know, the Creck Magnet School District, and you can see what all their percentages are. And then you can go even deeper and look at each school as it falls in. Like when we had a couple of the schools in our NCCC, I'd be able to see how well so-and-so did and so-and-so didn't, and we were able to compare ourselves. So I would assume yes. Long answer to your short question.
I would assume our results for a small district compared to schools that look very fancy are, I bet our scores are better than theirs.
Maybe, maybe. So here is our comparison of the surrounding districts. Again, kind of to say, to go along with what the other two presenters were, or the other two presenters were talking about when they were presenting, we're right there, second, third, right, right around, depending on the year, every year. This year, we fell in the three out of seven comparison with the districts around us, and then also two out of seven with NGSS. And then at the bottom, as I put, that's sort of like the, if you ever really want to read up on the suppression stuff, it's down there on that link. So you could go on, I can send you the link if you want to email me. I can send it to you, and it gives you the nitty-gritty on why it's suppressed. It even gives you math about it.
Wow.
Testable. Anyway, moving on. So, oh, so before I get into the advanced placement stuff, I want to sort of piggyback off of the conversations that they were beginning or that they stated in terms of the programs that are being put in place or have been put in place over the last few years at the elementary and the middle school level. Their progress, their growth, their, just generally, in my opinion, leaps and bounds, right, of like how well their kids are starting to really do, I am looking forward to seeing at my school, right, in the upcoming years, especially like in the math part. As you can see, 40% isn't where we want to be in terms of SAT and that percent proficient passing math. But the way that their scores are slowly growing over time, that should connect to us over the next few years, right? If Tim's sixth grade has improved, his hope his seventh grade improves, his eighth grade improves, that should start coming up. And now we also have teachers that are connected at those levels. So he has an eighth grade teacher that is also teaching our ninth grade algebra. So that, that program could also be a part of that as it's going up, right? So what they're seeing, we should hope to see, and a great example of that is NGSS. Because NGSS was brought in and was started really in 2018, right? Some of the curriculum that was brought in was around 2019. If you take the 2020 out, right, and 2021 out, that growth over NGSS, through NGSS, can be seen now at my level where we are two out of seven in, you know, the surrounding districts, but also number four, right, in the whole state, again, asterisk. But nonetheless, right, like I've been able to see the growth in our science because of the things that they implemented at the elementaries years ago. So now the hope is to see that in the math and see that in the ELA. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. AP Advanced Placement Test Results, something that we present out on every year. As you can see, total number of AP students this year was 70, number of exams was 104. Less students this year, less exams, because more students are taking our early college experience through UConn. They're making the decision to take that course instead of our AP. So there wasn't, last year, there was AP US History. When we look at this, when we do the same presentation next year, it'll be even less because we didn't have any students take AP US History this year. They chose to take ECE US History. Last year, it was AP Chem. Students didn't take AP Chem because they chose to take ECE Chemistry. And what we're finding from conversations with students and, really from conversations with students and some other information, is that students would rather take a course where it's their cumulative effort, right? Like, what did I do this semester? What did I do this year in the effort I put in to learn the material that gets me the grade through early college experience than having to do it all and then take a test, right, in SICA, right? Like you take one test on one day that you gotta get a three on, and if you don't get that three, you aren't getting credit for the credit that you want to get, which then is reported here. They would rather take an ECE where it's my effort throughout the course. Everything I've done throughout the course and that grade comes at the end. So that's kind of some of the conversations that have been going on. We still offer both though, right? So a good example is this year, we have ECE Bio. And if you want to take the AP test for biology, you can, because the ECE Bio and the AP Biology kind of run parallel. And then the teacher's going to add an anatomy part at the end after that then adds the AP portion. But other courses don't do that. They don't mirror that well. So US History, you can't do an AP and an ECE US History at the same time. So, sorry, I digress. AP Test Results. And then here are like normal, sorry, like usual, all the courses that we gave last year in AP. And then in parentheses, you can see the small numbers, sorry, in the small parentheses, you can see the numbers of how many students took those. If you see one that says VHS, for instance, Psychology, VHS II, that is Virtual High School, which is another component that we offer to our students who can't, for whatever reasons, can't take certain courses, we allow them or provide them with the opportunity to take VHS, but really only in certain cases for courses that we already have if they really can't fit it in their schedule. Other than that, we try to encourage our VHS courses to, once you've exhausted what we have, you can then take that VHS course. That is the next level of math, or the next level of history, or the next level of English that we might not be able to offer you at the high school. Next steps at the high school. Again, continuing to identify areas of need through the collection and disaggregation of data. We use PSAT nine, 10, the SAT 11. We use SAT results from the prior year as well to help kind of guide departmentally where they want to go. They spend time as departments to kind of, at the beginning of the year, come up with plans. Usually, the plan is a continuation of a longer plan or a larger plan that had been started a year or two before with tweaks to kind of keep going. So one good example is we came together at the end of last year and looked at what are some common themes in STEM and Humanities sections of our building. And it was, a lot of it had to do with like, how do we look at data and how do we talk about that data, right? So that can be done in English, can be done in math, can be done in science, can be done in basically every course. It's just what words do you use to come up with that same information? And then professional learning opportunities. This year, with the new teacher evaluation model that we've taken on, teachers have a lot more autonomy in terms of like, how can I make, how can I get better at my craft, while at the same time, we are able to guide them with possibilities and professional development opportunities throughout that. So that should also help us. And then again, as we normally do, look at intervention and provide students with different interventions when needed, as needed. And that's it for me and the whole presentation. If the board has any questions for any of us, please ask.
Any questions?
I mean, as you all know, I mean, we're pretty quick to respond to emails. So anytime you want to email us or call us or come in for a meeting and talk about anything you see or hear, or any questions you have on what we're doing, please, our doors are always open.
Well, thank you, Tony.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad this is going to be available online as well, too. I think it's going to be very helpful for people to see.
Actually, those that like to compare, they can look at this. Yeah, thank you for the comprehensive handout, color-codedness, your explanation. Please thank the staff and certainly the students for everything they've done to make this all successful. Thank you again. Item 3B.
Thank you, everybody. If you would like to leave, you certainly may.
The bronze honors are calling me.
Yeah, we'll give a 30-second break, okay? You guys don't have to stay. You've got a long day. And tomorrow's not going to be a whole lot easier, so enjoy the evening. If you're a Yankee fan, you can just stay here. You don't have to.
Tim, you might. Tim, if you could give us a couple more minutes, I think. No? Missing?
For what?
If we can get to the bus.
I was going to do the update. That was asked.
Could we do that now?
I am going to do that now. Sure. Mr. Phelan, why don't you say?
Do I need to say it?
Sure. Yeah, why'd you sit in front of that? Okay. Item 3B, bus update. I have continued the conversation, Mr. McGrath, and thank you for being here and for the We did a three-day tracking run Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of this week. I did speak with M&amp;J earlier this morning. We are going to do a dry run of a reroute of our longest bus route tomorrow morning. This is before we move students, though. This is just, you know, prior to picking up students to see if we can shave off about five to seven minutes. Is it bus five or?
Bus four. Well, it's got a seven on it now because it's the bigger bus, which is.
Okay, yes, for the bus.
Bus four AM.
Bus four.
Bus four AM for Seymour and all.
Yeah, I can't find it, bus four.
We're looking for a switch. It would change bus times for pickups, you know, but we're going to see first if it will make a difference of about five to seven minutes.
So you're planning on doing this?
So you're planning on doing this, if I understand, after the students have been in school and then you're gonna run the route again? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know when she's doing it, but it's not gonna be tomorrow because we haven't let families know.
Sure, sure. No, absolutely. To do the dry run, though, it's gonna be done prior to, but it's gonna be hard to represent. You don't know what the traffic patterns are if you're running at different times, so.
Yeah, I think what they're looking at, Mr. Andrews, is the number of turns to take.
Got it, okay. That makes sense.
We do have, and this, this would be a conversation, you know, as we're upcoming in our, our budget conversations, we are forty-five minutes with our buses out of the second stop. If we are including Seymour to Allgrove, we do go above, you know, forty-five minutes.
So, I'm sorry, so bus four, and then there'll be one or two other buses that'll be impacted?
No, that would just be bus four.
Is that what we're gonna find out? I thought I heard that we're gonna see whether or not there's other stops that perhaps a different bus could be doing. Did I miss that?
That, that was a discussion at one point, at some point, whether here or on the phone with M&amp;J. But in this particular case, like Mr. McKinney, I followed the bus and did timestamps and reported to Missy and M&amp;J.
Yeah.
And they were able to come up with a different alternative possible route, depending on whether that works or not.
Possible.
Depends on this dry run.
A change in the route, but not in the stops.
Correct.
Right.
For, for geography, visual perspective.
Yeah.
John, you got South Grand.
Yep.
And you got North Main.
Yep.
Two long parallels.
Yep.
If you can take out some of that length by changing where the bus goes, well, I got, and getting all the details of it right here, you could take out a chunk of time. And I believe that's what they're going to try in the dry run. But people would still be picked up.
If we changed stops, all it would do is make the, the timeframe with another bus. We have one stop that's about twenty to twenty-three children. On, on our, on that particular bus, bus four.
Is that in close proximity to the center here, or is that off in the?
Are the issues, they go by it, don't pick up those kids, do the whole route, and then go all the way back there.
Oh, whatever, I just, yeah.
So that takes up.
There are a few tweaks. They're working it. They're working. I'm not the best.
So five to seven minutes would obviously be great. I still worry about the two Allgrove students at Harvest Crystal who get on the bus at seven twenty-three and aren't getting to Allgrove till eight thirty-five, eight forty, currently. So you take off five to seven minutes, you're still, those kids are still on the bus for an hour. That's all.
Is that the first pickup, then, on that?
Yeah, and if it does, it says the first stop is at seven twenty-three. I haven't, I'm at work, so I haven't had it, I can't see if that's accurate, but if that's the first stop and they don't get to Allgrove till eight forty, that's a very long bus route. So within five to seven minutes would be great, but that's not gonna help those poor kids.
They're picking up on East Street, then they're heading up on East Street, and they're stopping right there on that crazy little street that comes in off of, across from where the cows live.
What bus number is that?
Four.
Bus four, KF.
It's called Allgrove, Austin, and back to East Street.
But the numbers that you're seeing on the post of the route, Amanda, would be different if this dry run works.
Oh, got it. So, well, I'm just saying, if, if a kid right now is getting on at seven twenty-three and not getting to Allgrove till eight, let's say even thirty-five, that's longer than an hour. So if we save five to seven minutes, they're still on the bus for an hour. Do you know what I mean?
I hear you.
I'm just saying, I'm just, I feel bad for those, I know a lot of people over there driving their kids because who wants their kid on the bus for an hour? So, so it's certainly five, seven minutes helps a lot of kids, but not those children. It's still not within our policy.
There was also another bus route that we received communication about at the beginning of the year. With, is there work on that schedule as well?
Not for, for this year, no, but for next year, because that one is a complete overhaul.
Right.
Yeah. So, and that, that communication came in the day before school started.
I, I, I'm not trying to pick on that. I'm just saying, if we're, if we're rerouting one of these routes, because we've had complaints and issues about it, we've also had complaints about other routes as well, so that's just mine.
That's the update. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Just, just one more comment. I mean, if we get to the point, folks, where, you know, you know, for the first half of the year keeps with this, I mean, at some point, we need to rethink and reach out to the vendor and see about adding another bus. I mean, this is, I don't know, this just doesn't, not that I don't enjoy your company, but it's good to see you, Pat.
I think that's always enough.
But I don't want to see you next month, and I don't want to see you, nothing personal. And I don't want to see you in December, and I don't want, I, I don't, this, this type of thing has to stop, I mean.
Well, you're right, the reality is, we're almost a quarter way through the year.
We need to have a solution, we need to have a solution soon.
So it's an option, it's a budgetary concern, right?
Well, you know.
But let's see what happens with this dry run first.
Maybe we played it wrong.
Well.
You're right, John, those could be things.
Maybe we played it wrong.
Maybe.
That could be true. A question, and I don't know the answer, Tim or Missy, do you know when our bus contract expires?
I don't.
Because one thing, in the contract, what, what bothers me, in the contract, our policy says forty-five minutes. The bus contract says an hour, and, and there's no reference to forty-five minutes, and I can't understand why policy doesn't match contracts. And that's going back a couple of years, and I'm not sure how that happened. I admitted at a previous meeting that I was ignorant last year. I thought the policy was an hour because I was always waiting an hour or more for a bus. But when I read this year, when we got into this bus issue, that our policy's forty-five minutes, and then I read the bus contract and it says an hour, you know, those things have to at least be in agreement. I mean, if those things aren't in agreement, nothing's gonna work. So, you know, I think it'll still take some updates, and, and you're right, John, it may, we may have to look at that. We made some tough decisions, and, you know, keeping kids on the bus for over an hour just isn't what we want to do in a town like East Gramby, especially, you know, I think being on time's important. I, I agree with the comment about having kids at school on time. I think you're better off ten minutes early than one minute late. If you grow up in this world, you're gonna be one minute late, five minutes late for your job, that's, that's not good learning, and I think, I appreciate you, everyone's taking a look at what we can do to improve the situation. Thank you, appreciate it.
I have one more question. How are you a Yankee fan?
Well, it's not your grandfather.
Doesn't matter.
It does matter.
He never, like, sat in bleachers?
He just answered your question.
I have.
Never sat in a bleachers?
Red Sox World Series.
He was supposed to do it the day before.
Run, Tim, run.
Eight oh.
Come on.
Go, go, hi.
They're watching Wednesday night, they're gonna win tonight.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Good night.
Okay. Item four, recommended actions. Can I get a motion to appoint Drew Namnoon? Namnoon pronounced correctly? To fill the board vacancy? He was recommended by the Republican Town Committee. Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Whitney. And I, I did talk to Drew, and I talked to Republican Town Committee and for the board, if you want to ask some questions. But I think first Drew gave up a little paragraph about himself, so we don't have to ask him to tell us about himself. We'll let him talk first, and if you have a question or two you'd like to ask him?
I'll move up so I can. Of course not. But I'm gonna sit. So I'm Tru Namnoon, and I met most of you. I moved to East Gramby in 2015 with my family, with my wife and two boys. We were coming from Enfield, and our boys were at the Montessori school. So it was very important to us that we moved to a town with a small, community-based school system, so that they would really, because we knew what we ultimately wanted to do, public school, but we wanted to make sure that they would transition properly. And they did do that. So they came in in third and fourth grade in Seymour, and now they are in eighth and ninth grade. So I'm just meeting Tony for the first time as a parent with my ninth grader. And, and so they've, we've enjoyed it. I first got interested, my interest was piqued for the Board of Ed last year when we were talking about the budget. I was one of the few people to actually, I thought we should ask for more for the budget. I know everybody's looking to cut the budget. But I, I was looking at the numbers, and I, I do, my wife candidly does work, she's the school secretary at Seymour, so she, she does work for the town. She does not share information about families or anything with me, but I, we talk about, a little bit about work, so I know, I know some of the pain points. Professionally, I am a Chief Information Officer for Athena Healthcare in Farmington. It's a network of long-term care in SNF Homes. And previously, Trinity Health and Health in New England. I've implemented all the systems in St. Francis and Mercy and Johnson, built the teams to put the systems out. So when we talk about policy and procedure, that's been a cornerstone of my twenty-five year of career. Being an IT leader, similar to teachers in the respect that people will set up their printer and all of a sudden, they think they know everything there is to know about IT. I have to kind of back them up a little bit. I have to know a lot, a little bit about a lot of different things. So I have to use lean principles to learn, to go to where the work is done and understand what needs to be done. Find, seek out subject matter experts when, when we're discussing something here, and I know a topic's on agenda. Find a couple of people who are intimately familiar with that, or maybe we're talking about a capital expenditure for some, something. I'm not a maintenance person, but I may want to swing by to school and see what we're talking about, so I can make an educated decision. In my work life, I have to do that. In being healthcare with policy and procedure, those partnerships are critical because policy and procedure in healthcare affects lives. My job is to indirectly affect patients by providing the tools that clinicians use. So, so that's kind of my, my methodologies. I like to do GEMBA walks, where you kind of hop up and see, see how things are done. I do see this as an opportunity to give a little bit of voice to the faculty through the lens of a parent. I'm, I'm proud of the school system. I can see the impact of the budget decrease. I know it was approved, but it's not what we really needed. And I see that when I go to open houses, and I, I go to teacher, parent-teacher conferences and stuff, and I see that the faculty is working with what they have, with the means that we give until when they're doing a phenomenal job. But you can see the cuts. And so, that's, that's a little bit about me. I have nothing to do with education, other than teaching people work. However, I'm actively involved in my church, and I am a youth group, middle school youth group leader. So I've been teaching the middle schoolers for the last five years, so I have a small taste of, of what that life is, is like. So, it's kind of a.
That's a good age group to learn from.
Yeah, to learn a lot. And if you asked me ten years ago, would you be a youth group leader and/or would you be applying to be on the Board of Ed, I'd say you're nuts. But here I am.
Very good. Thank you for coming. Okay, any questions from the board for Drew?
Just a comment, I really appreciated your support at the budget meetings. And thank you for showing up here for the past few weeks as well. Yeah.
Your attendance has been very good.
Yep.
It continues. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll call the motion to vote. All those in favor of appointing, well, of accepting Drew, and after this, you have to be sworn in by the town clerk, is that right? That's correct. Before you're physically part of us, but you're part of the discussion tonight, but not part of the voting. Okay? Well, you gotta be accepted first. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, welcome, Drew.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Glad to have you. Okay. So we don't have a here too late tonight, we'll try to work through the agenda as quickly as we can. Item four B, approved September 2024 financial report. We didn't do it last month because we didn't have a quorum, so we take a look at it tonight. Okay, Mary?
So the audited financial audits conducted by Mahoney and Sable is ongoing, and it should be done by early November. The business office has created and shared a student activities accounting manual to some of the high school staff that are involved with student activities in my school books. It is a work and process document that outlines guidelines of student activity fund accounting. It is a draft document, and it will be shared at an upcoming policy subcommittee meeting. We have entered the majority of our annual encumbrances for the 24, 25 school year. We plan to have the remaining annual encumbrances entered by the end of November. And the administration and the first select person will be meeting regarding solar possibilities for the future. If you look at the September financials, it's really uneventful at the moment because we're still putting in our encumbrances, and nothing's over at this time, so. Any questions?
Okay, I guess I should have asked for a motion to begin first. A motion to accept the financial report? Whitney, very good. And a second?
Second.
Amanda? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, motion carried unanimously again. Okay, item four C, approved policy three, four, five, three. This is our fourth reading, because I think we did some corrections on the last one. Can I get a motion so we can discuss it, to accept it on the floor?
I move to accept the policy on school activity funds.
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second the policy.
Motion by Lynn, seconded by Amanda. Any other discussion, questions, comments on it? The corrections are in red.
The, the fourth read, the only change is from the third, is at the bottom, the word "by" has been changed to "no later than," and there's a space before the last sentence, which actually, there was a space before, it didn't just show up on the account. So this is the fourth read with those two changes made.
Any questions, comments? Now, call, call for a vote then? All those in favor of accepting the new policy on school activity funds, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously, thank you. Moving down to D, approved capital requests.
Yes, thank you. One of the outcomes of our facilities meeting earlier this week was to look at capital, our capital plan. The town, my understanding is scheduling a town meeting in November. Tomorrow night, the Board of Finance will review, discuss, and vote on, I believe they will be voting on the capital project. Just to refresh our memories, that was, we voted for approval on our September ninth meeting for our capital plan. There are some items that we would like to put forth at the November capital meeting rather than waiting to June. So as part of our facilities meeting this week, and in talking with Ray Carlson, our facilities director, those items consist of our cameras, both the server software as well as forty thousand dollars in actual cameras. We still have ten thousand dollars already in capital funds. We do have a grant, so this would be eligible for some reimbursement through the state safety grant. We are in actually pretty good shape with cameras. However, we have a couple of areas we need more coverage, and we've been shifting over the years from analog to digital. Parking lot repairs and sidewalk repairs, that would be, we have some nosing on the end of our concrete steps that have come off, so it's kind of a tripping hazard if you have nails without the, the nosing there. We also have some curbs that have been damaged over the years. I can think primarily at Allgrove School. So that would be not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. The reason we're asking for this now is because we can get the nosing done before we get icing and fix some sidewalks before we get some bad weather, if we're gonna get any ice this year.
I always wondered what the technical term for that was.
Well, I don't know if that's a technical term, but that's my term.
Sounds good.
I think it came from red, so I think it might be the nosing versus that metal piece.
You ever hear of that?
No.
The, the other item is to add a knee wall with power to our high school library. We are looking to move out some computers to make a, a more kind of typical classroom because we need some space. We do have some classrooms, but our classrooms at the high school are, are all varying sizes, and some are actually very small. This would give us a really nice teaching space to add a knee wall to our library with some power, so we can move some of our computers there. And then the last item for approval would be the Seymour air conditioning. And then the last item for approval would be the Seymour air conditioning. That is on our plan. We are looking to do mini splits, similar to what we did for All Grove Gym. And again, just to refresh everyone's memory, our Seymour school does not have an auditorium. So our gym serves as our entire meeting space. So if we have parents coming in, or all school assemblies, which they do often, and it does get quite warm in there.
What's the total amount, Missy?
Oh, Lynn.
I have 152,000. Somebody want to check my math? That's for all of those, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items. That's right? Just for a total of 152,000, not to exceed.
I guess I didn't call for a motion for that. Begin the discussion. So can I get a motion to accept, to approve those numbers for the capital request? If it does, how much money you getting, Missy?
152, not to exceed 152,000, with any unused funds going back to the town. Relax. I'll move to approve capital requests as detailed in this meeting, not to exceed $152,000.
Motion by Lynn, do you have a second?
I have a question. I'm not sure if I misheard something. I know you, the final number you just said is 152. I thought before you had said 157. Can we confirm that number before we go forward?
Well, give me a second and do that, because I never asked for that initially. So you should have been able to ask that question already.
We're just trying to keep you on your toes, Bob.
If you second it, then you could ask that question in discussion and get the answer. I still need a second on the motion. We shouldn't even be discussing it unless I did that initially. Seconded by Amanda. Okay, now we got Mark's question, and we're looking for the answer. Good.
It's 152.
152.
Thank you.
Thank you for confirming.
Did you think you heard earlier tonight, a different number?
Yeah.
Oh, no. Yeah. It was 152. Okay.
And I'm sorry, and then at some point, there could be reimbursement through the safety grant?
Correct, for the cameras.
But that would be kind of a de minimis enough.
I mean, our total amount is that we would put in for is 40, $50,000. I think we're about, it shifts a little bit, but I think we're at about a 46% reimbursement rate.
How long does that usually take to come, like, get reimbursed back to us? I'm sure they all vary, but, sorry.
I'm confused. These are capital, how do they reimburse them?
The cameras, we have a grant, a safety grant that we applied for a couple of years ago, as well as our door grant. So both of those, we get some reimbursement from the state.
Okay, that makes sense.
So even though it's capital funding, essentially, there'd be funding coming back to the town, whatever that reimbursement rate is. You have to complete the project, and every quarter you have to do an update. So it really kind of depends on where you're done with the project as towards the, with the recording period. But I think it actually comes in pretty, it really depends. Yeah. Some are better than others, in terms of grant reimbursement.
And probably what they're coming from, too.
Correct. And we've never actually applied for this grant before, so I don't have any personal knowledge and experience with the safety grants.
This is the first time applying to, like, utilizing that grant, right? Because I think, like you said, we didn't do the doors yet.
We're in the process of doing the doors, correct. Yeah, both of those are safety grants. That's our first time. Well, I shouldn't say that. I think about 10 years ago, we did safety grant as well.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion for capital request of 152,000, not more than, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Item E, approve amount for non-lapsing fund. Okay, get a motion first. You don't even know the amount, but if you make a motion, we'll talk about it.
I'll move to talk about it.
Lisa.
Lisa's making the motion?
I'll second to talk about it.
And me in the second. Okay.
Our year-end number is unaudited at this time of about 240,000 for bottom line. So we can take all of that. We can take up to 2% to put in non-lapsing, which is about 380,000. So that 240, we need to make a decision on what we want to put into non-lapsing and what we want to return to the town.
The Board of Finance has requested that we give an idea. Remember, just to give a little bit of history, it used to be 1%. It went up about three years ago to 2%. It has just changed that the Board of Education could be the board that actually makes the decision of what to put in a non-lapsing account.
And it could change. It is unaudited, but if either a percentage or something that they're planning on, the Board of Finance is asking.
I'm sorry, Mary, can you just run those numbers again?
It's about 240,000. And 2% would be 380. So it's about 1.25% left over from our budget last year. At the moment, unaudited.
Roughly 240.
So our question is, do we put all of it, part of it, give it all back to the Board of Finance? It's up to the board. We don't have to, like, they said we don't have to go and ask for permission anymore. This has worked very effectively in the state, because about five years ago, you could keep zero, and it was very difficult for Board of Ed. So our Board of Finance has been very good with us, that when this started, a number of years ago, they gave us the 1%. If we had 1%, they let us keep up to that. And then it worked so well in the state, they doubled it to 2%. And some towns, and with my conversation with board chairs, there was no way the Board of Finances or towns would give them a penny more. And this has worked out now with the state, so it's up to the Board of Education to make those decisions and make those, all those decisions on our own. So.
And I'm sorry, and you have this as being about 1.25%?
Yeah.
I did that new math on that.
So the 240, is it 100%, 50%, no percent? It's up to us to decide that, so we could tell the Board of Finance, so what we're doing, if we want to.
And there was no expectation when we went through budget. There was no expectation when the budget was passed.
Correct.
I'm sorry, no expectation what?
No expectation, when the budget was passed, there was no expectation on the Board of Finance that there'd be a return from the Board of Education of any, of any funds. Right. And if we were, you know, last year we were bound, or prior years, we were bound to 2%. This is 1.25%. I would suggest that we remove the motion that's on the floor, and make a new motion to approve the sum of 240,000 to be placed in the Board of Education non-lapsing fund. But I would think we would need to have a motion to, I'm sorry, withdraw the motion. If the person who made that, if no motion withdrew it, then it'd be so.
I will withdraw my motion.
You withdraw your motion, okay. So John, give your motion again, to put the 240 into non-lapsing?
Yes.
Okay, discussion of comments, questions about that? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Item F, approve the use of non-lapsing funds not to exceed $20,000 for windows, blinds, tinting, and tree removal. Missy?
Sure.
Let me get a motion first. I'm going backwards. I'm getting backwards today. I have a motion to accept that motion. Mark, second. Whitney, okay. Go ahead.
Sure. Again, as a result of our facilities meeting this past week, we talked about some items. We have typically used our non-lapsing account for unplanned maintenance or unexpected, you know, maintenance that costs far more than we would anticipate. Some capital requests in the past, some fields, you know, we do not have a grounds budget line, but we have been taking care of some of our fields, as well as some safety and security measures. So whenever we do a safety audit, or we have drills, we have our emergency personnel that accompany us on those, and they, then we debrief after, so we get some feedback. One of the things we would like to do is, they call them the side lights, like the windows on the side of some of our doors, or the window that are part of our doors, we need to either put a tinting or a type of a blind on. So we start, we're going to start with Seymour School and a portion of the middle school. And the quotes that we have for that.
13,000?
Not to exceed 14,000. We do have a few quotes for those items. We did a few over the summer at Seymour School. We want to complete Seymour School and work on some of the areas of the middle school. Then we will continue with middle school, high school, and areas of All Grove. So that is one, 14,000 not to exceed. The second item that we talked about is the tree line, and that might not be the technical term, behind Seymour School. If you walk out of the cafeteria to the playground area, the playground kind of dives down a little bit, then we have a fence, and Mrs. Lukinbach has requested that the area behind the fence be cleared, so that we don't have poison ivy kind of encroaching on that area. We did that not too long ago, behind the soccer field, and it actually has worked really well, because then it makes it easier for the town to maintain that. Additionally, we have some trees. If you're driving in front of the middle school, over to your right, in front of the middle school, that are dead or dying, that we would like to have removed. And that cost is 5,875. I understand that quote is a little off from last week, but whatever is the excess, we will take out of operating costs. It might be a 1,560,000. So those are the items that we would have liked, we like to move forward for approval for non-lapsing.
And that's a good purpose of a non-lapsing fund, because we don't, we're not in the tree business. We've never been in the field business, but someone has to take care of them. We've put money into improving softball field, baseball field. You know, we've put money into irrigating now, so we've been using this money appropriately and for things that need it. I mean, one thing in particular, I think we took it out of capital and non-lapsing over the years, is about 10,000 each year for tennis courts. If we didn't do that, we'd be replacing those tennis courts right now, at over a quarter of a million. So that was good planning on our part, and we've been using this fund for it. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item G, can I get a motion, and then we'll, we need a vote to go into executive session. I get a motion to approve superintendent's extension of contract?
So moved.
By Lynn, so moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. And I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss it.
I move to go into executive session to discuss it.
And we're inviting.
And we're inviting. Missy?
Superintendent.
The superintendent.
Do you have a second for that motion? Whitney with a second. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. We're going into executive session of the. I guess we're gonna have to go to the room next door, how this thing is on. So, we won't be doing any voting in executive session. I guess we won't be able to invite you to this one until you're sworn in. But all votes will be done publicly, but this isn't executive session. Okay? So when we come back, all we're going to be doing is voting on that. Comments of visitors, again, if you want to stay and then adjournments. We have to go in the other room, because we're on TV.
I'm a Yankees fan, so I got nowhere to go.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving, approving the superintendent's extension of contract to a third year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Do we have, do you want to make comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just really want to see that ending.
Comments from visitors?
Not, I mean, it's quick and easy. One was, I thought the student performance presentation was amazing. I thought the numbers looked great. I'm also a person that, I go outside of data. I think sometimes we talk about budget, we talk about teachers' contracts, see the people fighting about, well, you know, we're not performing as well as Granby, and they don't spend as much money. But I really think that we have amazing teachers here. I think we have amazing staff here. I think it shows the amount of effort they put in that presentation. I can only speak for my two kids, but every teacher they've had, they've loved. Their experiences have been amazing. I grew up in this town. I feel like it's been that way since I was a kid. We are a small district, and that costs money. But I think that when that stuff comes up, and budget talks, and teacher contracts, I think sometimes just to make, remember to make sure that sometimes, things on paper don't always show the whole picture. So I think we look great, but I think there's, as a whole, I think we blow some of those other districts out of the water, with some of the scary things you see going on in other towns around us, and the support that our teachers get from our staff. So that was my one on that. And two, just on the buses, I really appreciate the work that's been done. I knew they were working on it. I love the idea that they're going to try to do a dry run and redirect it. I worked for the town for, from 2015 to 2023, so I've driven every road in this town, and I know how long it takes from point A to point B, and the route just seems a little wonky. And I hope that, I hope that, you know, even at this point, and as we continue to keep working on it, even five to six minutes gets us something, hopefully. And then, if we have to keep looking at other, I just really want the discussion to stay open until we feel that the kids are getting there. I agree. I'm a person that, I drive my family nuts, because if I have to be somewhere at 8:30, I'm there at 8:10. And I'm just one of those people. And I'm not saying my kid has to get to school 20 minutes early, but I think that she should be showing up consistently with enough time to have a moment and get themselves to school. And that's not just for, you know, my daughter. When I was looking at All Grove, I mean, that All Grove bus was showing up at 8:35 the four days I sat and watched it, and that's when school is starting. And that's just not acceptable for me. And I just think that's something the bus company really gets to get on. Speaking of budgets, we do spend a lot of money. I didn't, you know, didn't see a line item this year on it, but I've seen it before, and I know it's upward of close to $2 million in that budget, or maybe over at that point. That's a lot of money to spend on buses. So if we're spending that money on buses, and that's a huge thing, our kids should be getting places in a timely fashion in this town that's got 37 miles of town roads. It's not that, you know, we can do that. That's it now.
Thank you, Patrick, for your correspondence and your comments. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the public? Okay.
I move to adjournment.
And I'll take a motion for adjournment. John, Mark, all those in favor, aye. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.